I'm going to call our December 2 Boland County Planning and Zoning Meeting to order. If you will, at this time stand for our prayer and pledge of allegiance. Father, we're thankful to you for the blessings of this day. We're thankful now for the opportunity we have tonight to serve as this Planning Commission. We're thankful for this county. We're thankful for our elected officials, our first responders, and our county staff, and especially those that have made this meeting possible for all the hard work they've done to put it together. Now, Father, we just pray that we conduct ourselves tonight in a way that respects each other, but most of all honors you, and we give you the honor and praise for all of this. We pray in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I'm going to call the roll. Chairman is present. Daniel Nance.
Here.
Mr. Baeus. Mr. Church.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Tonsmire.
Here.
Mr. Paget. Mr. Mullik.
Present.
Mr. Seibert.
Here.
Mr. Bullier.
Here.
We have a quorum. At this time, you've all had a copy of the minutes sent to you, so I will entertain a motion on those unless there's any items that we've missed or need to be corrected.
I'd like to make my first, final, and final statement.
Mr. Davis has made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Mr. Nance is second in the motion. Any questions? All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes have been approved. I want to welcome you to our meeting tonight. Hopefully, if you have an interest in speaking on any item on the agenda tonight, you stopped at the front desk and filled out one of the forms there for the item that you wanted to speak to. Those will be brought to me, and at the appropriate time when we get to that particular item, we'll go through a series of allowing staff to make a presentation. We'll let the developer speak, and then at some point, I will call on you, the public, if you have an interest in speaking to that item and have signed up for it. We'll let you come up. You'll need to come up and give your name and address. You need to come to the microphone to speak. All I ask is that when you come, please say what you need to say. We want to hear what you have to say to us. But once I close, there will come a point on each item where I will close the public hearing. I know there's a temptation sometime, you forgot something, you want to speak again, but once the public hearing is closed, I will not allow you to speak. So just keep that in mind. I would ask if you have a cell phone, to please mute that so that we're not interrupted with those. Okay, we're going to move into our public hearings. We do have one change. We had an old business item that has been addressed already with our staff, and that is case number S-21089, BFLC subdivision Phase 1, also known as Bee Tree Creek Phase 1. So if you are here for that item, it's already been addressed with our staff. So it will not be, we will not go to that tonight. All right, so our first item is case number PUD 21-000006, Glass Road RV Park. So I'm going to open a public hearing on this item, and I'm going to ask if there's anyone on the Planning Commission that needs to declare any prior communication on this item with anyone. Okay, there are none. Ms. Booth.
Good evening. This is for a proposed RV park that is on Patterson Road in the Wilcox community. This was brought to us as a notice of violation, and we're now here to try to get them to become compliant with their RV park and move forward with it. It's 3.78 acres. There are approximately, there are going to be 14 sites, and the setbacks will be 30-foot front, rear, and side. They are proposing to have 566 linear feet of streets that will be private, will not be county-maintained. They are going to be accessing Patterson Road. Our new subdivision regulations require that they improve the access at Patterson Road to increase the roadway width to 24-foot, and they will have to improve that at 300 feet on each side of that access. So a total of 600 feet will have to be improved. The owner is Jasper Little, located at the location of the proposed RV park. This is your site plan. The subject property is unzoned, and it's located in Planted District 13. They will have onsite wells, septic, and EMC will be the electricity provider. There was not a traffic study required for this particular location. The drainage has been submitted and reviewed and accepted by the Boland County Highway Department. Wetlands have been reviewed and accepted by the Natural Resource Planner. Due to a site visit that was after your staff report was submitted to you, there was indication of impacts to the wetlands that are there. The owner has been notified and has taken action to clear up any wetlands, and we are going to have conditions of approval for the final site plan. So staff does recommend that the site plan be approved, subject to compliance with Boland County subdivision regulations, with the following conditions. One, provide a letter from a wetland professional agreeing that all prior wetland impacts have been resolved and the field dirt has been removed. Coordination with Boland County Highway Department for the construction and roadway improvements to Patterson Road, and the issuance of a subdivision permit from Boland County Highway Department prior to any improvements. And then there can be no new RVs placed onsite until all conditions have been met, approved, and the final site plan has been recorded. So I will answer any questions that y'all may have for me.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
I have one. So you talk about removing the field dirt. Do they have to repair the wetland? Because I would assume we've had plants or vegetation others that have been damaged or destroyed.
I'm not familiar with the site, but I think due to the site visit, there was minimal impact to what is existing, but that will be addressed, you know, before we can move forward with any kind of final approval. And we have, I believe Ashley is here tonight. We have Ori King, who actually visited the site, maybe provide some additional input as needed.
Ashley, would you be in a position to comment on when some type of soil disturbance has impacted a wetland, how that impact can be resolved in a situation like this?
Yes, Ashley Campbell, Nutrice Lowes Planner. When they have an impact, normally we notify the Corps of Engineers, and then they start to, they go in and mitigate the impacts, and they can remove them. At that time, we look at the vegetation. A lot of times, they're able to not disturb it too greatly, so the vegetation remains. Normally, we ask the Corps to come out and look at it. Depending on the amount of fill, sometimes we can handle it in-house. But once they remove it and they submit a letter stating it's been removed, we'll do an inspection, and if we feel additional mitigations needed, we will acquire it before we sign off on it.
And before you go, Ashley, can you explain just maybe the difference between the quality of wetlands and, in this case, most likely a very low-quality type wetland, not what we might think of in terms of a swamp in the Delta area or anything like that?
Well, I love all wetlands, and you know that, so I have a hard time talking about them. But yeah, you know, there's different qualities. There's high-quality and lower-end quality and different mitigation requirements when you impact them. These are lower-end wetlands that were previously impacted. A lot of the areas around it have been disturbed, so they would not rank really high when it comes to review by the Corps and mitigation requirements. But we feel comfortable that we can have them mitigate this and handle it and restore that area back to the condition prior to their impact.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, Mary. All right, I have signed up Chris Lee.
Good evening. My name is Chris Lee with Lee Engineering Company. I'm here on behalf of the owner, and I did the engineering plans for this site plan. I think Mary did a really good job of presenting the project. It's going to be your typical RV park. It's going to be a one-way street, 20 feet wide. It's going to come in and loop around and then exit. We have the required amount of parking spaces. The existing septic field is large enough to serve the slated RVs that are going to be onsite, and we do have our stormwater retention pond. And I've been in, you know, I've been in the conversations with the wetlands, so we are definitely addressing that issue, and we'll have that done as promptly as we can.
Okay.
And I'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Chris? Okay, easy enough.
Thank you.
How about Mr. Little? Does he like to speak, or?
He's the owner, and if y'all have any questions for him, he can answer them, but...
Okay. Any questions for the, okay, I guess not. All right. Any questions for staff? All right, then I'm going to, did I miss anyone that wanted to speak on this item? That didn't sign up? I'll give you the chance. All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing on this. Your time, guys. What do you want to do? Any questions before we entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right, Mr. Davis has made a motion that it be approved with the contingencies listed by staff.
I'll second it.
Mr. Mullik is second in the motion. Are there any questions, comments, before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item is approved. Okay, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing for case number SC-21-00001, resub of Lot 1, Paddock Trace. I'll ask, does anyone need to declare any prior communication on this item? Okay. Ms. Booth.
Okay, this is a resub of an existing subdivision. They're going to do four lots. Smallest lot is five acres, largest lot is 9.46. The surveyor is Smith, Clark &amp; Associates. There are no proposed new streets. They will access an existing cul-de-sac. The subject property is located at the terminus of Horses and Hounds Road west, near the town of Manuel Springs. It is currently zoned RSF-1 and located in Planted District 21. It's going to be onsite well, onsite septic. Balden EMC will be the electricity provider, and Central Link is going to be the telephone provider. There was no traffic study required for this particular proposed subdivision. The drainage narrative has been reviewed and accepted by the Boland County Highway Department and is concurrent with the Boland County subdivision regulations. Wetlands have been shown on the plat and have been reviewed, and the delineation provided has been accepted by the Natural Resource Planner. The written drainage, excuse me, since your staff report was sent out, there have been one email received and a phone call received from adjacent property owners. One was addressing, or one comment was about the existing stormwater drainage, and then one was addressing the, there's some conflict in the legal description of the property and possibly not having everything recorded so that everything could be pulled in for the surveyor to review by. So, planning and zoning staff comments are the written drainage narrative, as shown, was provided during technical review and has been signed by license PE. Due to the comments received via the email and the phone call, staff has consulted with the Boland County Highway Department again to get Weezy Jeffers' comments, and they are here with, herein provided. One comment, the site engineer has certified the submitted calculations which follow the county regulations for the stormwater mitigation. There is a drainage easement that's on the plat to account for the existing flow and common area to protect the jurisdictional wetlands as required by county regulations. There will be no creating of a pond, just a common area where the property owners are responsible to maintain. There is an area between Lots 2 and 3 and attenuates some existing stormwater from the original subdivision pond. The properties are zoned, so there would be additional requirements for stormwater detention if the properties were to have additional impervious services, such as more buildings that would be permitted by the RSF-1 zoning. Some of the property will continue to drain to the existing created pond in the original subdivision, while the remaining property is naturally sloped south and would cause major evasive grading to drain the existing pond, which is also not sized to attenuate the water. So staff does recommend that this be approved, subject to compliance with the Boland County subdivision regulations, with the following conditions. Condition one is the applicant should resolve any discrepancies with the legal description of the proposed division with adjacent property owners prior to recording of the final plat, and two, address any issues that may arise or be a concern regarding the stormwater drainage. And so I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
And if I could just add on that contingency two, this was discussed briefly during work session, that contingency two, it's not actually on the slide, but we're just going to check to confirm that they're meeting the requirements of the subdivision regulations. Not any question, random question that comes up, but we're going to just double-check on that specifically, that existing conveyance, to confirm that everything's on there as required by the subdivision regulation.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
I have one in one of our notes. I guess it's a communication about some different, differences in surveying and pins and things not lining up. Can you address that?
Yes, sir. That is something that actually can be addressed outside of, you know, this meeting. That is a condition of approval. I believe there was some additional surveys, deeds that may not have gotten recorded, so they were not picked up during the survey for this particular division. But the applicant, the surveyor, and the adjacent property owners can discuss that after this meeting and get everything resolved, and it is a condition that this is resolved prior to final plat approval.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Booth. All right, let's start with those that have signed up. Mr. Hunter Smith.
Good evening. My name's Hunter Smith with Smith, Clark &amp; Associates. We're the surveyor on this job, and it was brought to our attention yesterday about the discrepancy with the property lines. We're aware of it. I don't anticipate it being a problem. I think I know what the issue is, but I don't think it's going to, I think it'll be easily resolved between neighbors and our current property owner. There's a, the deed that conveyed this property described it as a lot in the previously-planted subdivision. I think it's Lot 1, Phase 2A. Yeah, Lot 1, Phase 2A. But then, in that same deed, there was a more particularly described as meets and bounds description that veered from the actually-platted lot. So there's some, kind of some moving parts there that we kind of missed on the initial plat.
Okay.
But I don't anticipate it being a problem, coming to a conclusion, and I don't expect it to change anything by enough magnitude to make it fall outside the subdivision regulations.
These lots are plenty large, so it's just an adjustment on a lot line that would be very small.
That's right.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Thanks, sir.
Yep.
Albert Lipscomb? Or Oswald, either one? Either one of you? They're going to team up? You're going to let the older brother speak first, okay?
I'm Oswald Lipscomb, 10820 Balden Lane, Foley, Alabama. And speaking in reference to this re-subdivision, we don't have any objection to the subdivision to resubbing it, but a question that we have is, I own property to the southeast, and my brother Albert owns property to the east, and we have, my dad owned it since the '30s, and Mr. Wright bought this subject property back in the '90s and had it surveyed, and he had a survey come out about 20 feet east of the established corner that had been there for years, and that original lighter post is still there today. I had our property surveyed to the southeast, and our surveyor came right within a foot of that lighter state. And so there was 20-foot difference there, which, that doesn't make all difference in the world, but this lighter post had been there, and the two fences came to that meeting point, and we met with Deborah Collym, through her representative, and she agreed that the old corner fence that had been there all these years was legitimate, and so she had McCory Williams draw a new plat after this original had been recorded. And that's what she deeded to the Roberts. I think it was a legitimate, logical mistake that they just picked up the one that was of record. Nobody ever recorded that second plat, and, but we didn't want it to, after we had reached an agreement with the previous owner for it to get undone, we'd like for it to be cleared up, and I think as well that we can meet with them and probably resolve this issue.
Okay.
But we would like for it to be resolved before they proceed.
And I think it's been set up that way in our, in our...
I think so.
If once we approve, we do it with the condition that'll take care of the...
I think that was in one of the conditions. That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
I am Albert Lipscomb, 9811 Vernon Park Road, Foley, Alabama. Just a brief comment. We're not objecting at all as far as the division of the property. Originally, we don't have to go too far back in history, but originally it was set up to be for equestrian, for riding. The larger acreage would provide for that or any other accommodations, so no objections at all from, you know, adjacent property owner. Look forward to having new neighbors. We've seen a lot of developments here. But as my brother Oswald had mentioned, our property has been in the family for 75, 80 years. There's been established fences and the potential of 20 feet, just a short distance, so I don't have to go into detail, of our personal property. My, my wife and I's personal property would be somewhat insignificant, but it does have implications because we have other property. There's three other brothers, and it's actually four 40s that could be potentially affected if the 20 feet is given without having been corrected. So we just ask that it be corrected before we proceed.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Edwin Benson. My address is 9922 Horses and Hounds. I'm representing the Paddock Trace POA. I'm the president. And the main question that comes up is, the street that's going to be in this new addition, is it going to be paved? Does it meet county regulations? And who's going to own it? Because the 19 lot owners of Horses and Hounds owns that street.
Okay.
And we would like to know where's this going?
I think I know the answer to this. I'm going to let our staff come up and address the roadway status there.
I believe what he's referring to is the easement... I believe what he's referring to is the easement that is extending from the end of Hounds to, to the end of this right here. That's right you're referring to?
It's from the circle to here.
These two are the lots here, this is only, it's not a road, it will not be paved, and that's just an easement to access the common area at the end, and it will be maintained by the property owners of those four lots, to the best of my knowledge.
In essence, those are driveways. They're just going to be long driveways, but they're going to be there on their personal property.
Correct.
My next question is, is the Horses and Hounds is a paved street, and should it fail, and it will in the next few years, are they going to participate in helping us pay for repaving the street? Actually, I'll be honest with you, we are going, we're trying shortly after the first of the year to petition the county to assume the maintenance on there. We tried this about a year ago, but the stipulations they put on us was rather onerous at the time, and new information has come to us, so it should make it easier the next color round. But until this happens, we own it, and there's going to be extra traffic on there. There may even be trucks with horse trailers and all that, and it will shorten the life of, of the road. And I'd like to bring up one more interesting point. According to 911, the name of the road is Horses and Hounds. That's all. No street, no road, no east or west or anything else. And, uh, everybody seems to have straightened it out except the county. Need to get it fixed or get with 911 and decide on what it's going to be. Okay?
Okay. Ms. Booth, let me ask you a question then. So if it is a private road, do they not need to get permission from the owners of that to be able to increase traffic for access to more than the one piece of property that was originally there? Do we know?
I will let Wheezy Jeffers with the Highway Department respond.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Wheezy Jeffers from the Bowman County Highway Department. If in the covenants that it does not restrict any further division of the property, then it should be able to provide access to any further divisions, which the property would still be under the POA and have access adequate to these lots created.
Did anybody up there have trouble hearing that? Um, I saw a couple of you kind of straining to hear. Do we need that repeated?
So this lot is part of paddock of, of the original subdivision?
It is an existing lot, part of it. It's already being accessed by that private road.
Which, which shares in the maintenance of, of that roadway?
Correct.
As the one lot.
Well, I can't confirm that. Uh, maybe Mr. Benson could, or whoever is over the maintenance of that road could.
Yeah. So essentially what Wheezy said there was this is lot one of an existing subdivision which has right of access to this existing private road. There were presumably, and there may not be, but covenants in place at the time this original subdivision, uh, went into play. We don't regulate covenants in our approval process, um, but unless there's a covenant that says someone can't re-subdivide their property, um, or limit the number of lots or anything like that, they have access to that private road as lot one of that subdivision, and they're now requesting a legitimate subdivision, assuming there are no covenants or anything restricting that.
Okay. Then my suggestion is going to be to our last speaker is that, you know, you would need to look at the restrictive covenants which is beyond this planning commission to regulate to find out if there is any kind of, any kind of statement in restrictive covenants that prohibited this from being, that's beyond us. We can't regulate that. So you would need to look at that to see if there's anything in those restrictive covenants that would address what you just talked about. Okay. All right.
I just want to remind, because this is being broadcasted online, you do need to step up to the microphone. Otherwise, the folks watching online can't hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I didn't, I'm sorry, and I didn't say this before. You need to understand, we are being broadcast face, on Facebook, so anything spoken, you need to come to the mic. So it's not, we're not, not being rude to make you have to get up there, but we need to hear you on the mic. So hopefully we addressed your comment. Anybody else have any questions for staff on the planning commission?
I have a question, but this is, it was mentioned by one of the neighboring property owners that said this was originally set up as an equestrian paddock for the neighborhood. So it may be a question or a statement, but for the same gentleman, that if that was a restriction in the covenants, because I know in some of the equestrian neighborhoods, they, they do have set aside lots that are co-owned or at least co-used by. So is there something else probably to look at to see if there was a restriction on that lot as it pertains to division or usage?
Good point. Any other questions, comments? All right.
I do have one more comment in regards to the name of the road. If the name that is shown on the plat is inaccurate before it gets signed off by 911, they will correct it. So if it's of record at 911 as horse and ham, or horses and hound, then that's what will be reflected on the plat, and that'll be updated before it's recorded.
Yes, they will. They'll catch it.
They will.
All right. Did I miss anyone? Anyone else want to speak that didn't sign up? All right, in that case, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll ask planning commission members, what would you like to do with this?
I have a question with some of the, we're, some of the questions with the surveying, maybe with some of the drainage, with some of the access, not access, but responsibilities of the whomevers. Is this, is this one worth considering tabling?
Well, I think what we just heard, these, both the things you just mentioned are conditions of approval, so they're being addressed by our staff. So even though we approve it, they're going to take care of those items before the plat can be signed off on.
Okay.
So I think we're covered on that.
One other question, if, if I could, that has to do with the, uh, the Property Owners' Association, the fact that the current owner of this does in fact, uh, I assume pay that, pay his or her dues. Once this is divided, will that single due be, dues owed be divided among the four, or will they be separate dues for each one?
Well, that would fall under their homeowners association documents and covenants, so that would be up to them to decide what happens if this is granted and if it is subdivided into more lots than what it is now.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. What do you want to do?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve as presented with conditions.
All right, Mr. Anderson made a motion that we approve it with the stated conditions. Do I have a second? Mr. Tonsmire seconded it? All right. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's approved. All right. We're going to open up a public hearing now for case number SPP 21-0000. I hope I got enough 007, Silver Lake, Phase Two.
I do want to point out that I did not, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let me get mine.
Yes.
Does anybody need to clear any prior communication on this item before we...
Where the chair is, ma'am, would like to recuse myself from this.
Mr. Mullock's going to recuse himself on this item? And Ms. Booth?
There is a typo in the case number. It is SPP 21-000007. This is Silver Lake, it is Phase Two. It is an extension of Phase One, so they will be adjoining it. The smallest lot size will be 0.5 acres and largest lot be 0.78 acres. They are proposing to develop, excuse me, 14 lots. They're proposing 990-litre feet of public street lots accessed via Tranquility Lane, which is a new proposed internal road. It will be constructed to county standards, and upon completion, they will eventually be accepted or submit for, accept for maintenance on it. The current prop, our subject property is located north of Enchantment Lane, west of West Boulevard, near town of Silver Hill. It is currently unzoned and is located in Planning District 21. The utility services will be onsite well, onsite septic, Balden EMC will be the power provider, and Point Broadband will be the fiber. There was no traffic study required for this particular division. The drainage has been reviewed and accepted by Bowman County Highway Department. There are no wetlands present, and staff does recommend that this case be approved. There were no contingencies listed, but there's one outstanding thing that has not been provided to us, which is a disposition of comments, a full disposition of comments. So that's the only thing that we ask, is that they do provide that before we can grant the full preliminary plat approval.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Booth. All right, I have two signed up. Mr. Bernard? And Mr. Arp?
Randy Arp, the engineer for the project. This is a pretty simple, it's, uh, Phase Two. Phase One is starting to sell and going well, so time to do Phase Two. We did the drainage for Phase Two when we put the initial phase in. So I'm just here to address any questions.
Okay. Any questions for the engineer? Thank you, sir. All right. Did I miss anyone? All right, any questions now? Staff have any additional comments?
None.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve request.
Second. Mr. Church made the motion. Who, Mr. Cybert, do you second it? No, I'm sorry, Mr. Bullier seconded. All right. Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's approved. All right, well, that's all of our subdivision cases. Now we're going to move into our zoning cases. My first rezoning case is case number Z 21-000004, Cafferty property. This is a rezoning from RSF-1 to RSF-2. Selena?
All right, uh, this is a...
Let me ask. Don't slip by me. Anybody need to clear any prior communication on this item? Mr. Mullock has returned to our commission. All right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, this is a request to rezone, um, about 16,000 square feet from RSF-1 to RSF-2. The subject property is located in Planning District 26, and it is located on the east side of Scenic, um, Highway 98. The applicant is asking for RSF-2 in order to do a one-time split. Um, there are currently three homes on this one parcel. The applicant would like to divide off the front house. In order to do that, um, she needs to rezone to RSF-2. As you can see, there is, um, some adjacent RSF-2, and there is also some RSF-1 in this, um, area. Here's pictures of the subject property and some of the adjacent homes. Here is a survey that the applicant had submitted. As you can see, what's highlighted in the yellow area is what, um, the applicant would like to be rezoned to RSF-2. That would divide the front house, the front house, um, from the other two, making the slot more conforming. Um, staff hadn't seen any issues and has recommended approval of the subject property, of the rezoning.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Thank you. All right. I have two signed up. Ms. Cafferty? Marie Cafferty?
Hello, I'm Marie Cafferty. I'm the property owner. Um, I'm requesting this, um, it has been a rental for many years, and I think it would actually be an improvement to the community to go forward with this one-time split and actually sell this property off. It would, to me, having one less rental in the area is actually a step up. It has a separate septic, it's, um, it's a, it's, you know, I've, I've enjoyed living on this property for 28 years, and I would like to age in place, so, um, this would be very helpful for me.
Okay.
Does the commission, oh, I didn't state my address, sorry, but, uh, 16350 Scenic Highway 98, so, uh, does the commission have any questions?
Do you have any questions, Ms. Cafferty? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew Smith?
Thank you. Um, I'm Andrew Smith. I live at 22475 Sea Cliff in Fairhope. I'm also speaking for three relatives, and I don't have their addresses. Ellie Lanier, Charlotte Thorson, and Sarah Crosby. I have emails from them, but I don't have their addresses now, but we'll be happy to submit them, um, promptly, uh, to the, to the committee. We have concerns about the rezoning in this particular area. Due to the, the, the pressure for development, um, the one structure that is there is a historic home, um, and we have watched over the years, these, this, this region develop more and more and more. We're concerned that further development will adversely impact our property values later, um, and we're concerned about the enduring nature of this and the precedent that it might set that could adversely affect us in the future.
Okay. Any questions from planning commission? Selena, do you want to address his concern at all? I don't...
Yes.
Okay.
As I said, just the, um, front half that's highlighted in yellow, where it has about 16,000 square feet, is the only property that she wants to have rezoned. The remaining property will stay the same as RSF-1. There could, um, if she wanted to subdivide any further, she'd have to come back for another rezoning. So the back half will stay as is, and, um, she needs the RSF-2 in order to divide that front half off.
Okay.
So it, it wouldn't, um, I, we don't see it enhance, making any more development. I don't believe the applicant right now is planning on adding anything to the property or any more homes. You're only allowed, um, one dwelling plus an accessory dwelling per lot.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Did I miss anyone? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, then I'm gonna close the public hearing this time. All right, any discussion by the Planning Commission? Remember, this will be a recommendation to the County Commission for rezoning if you choose to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the recommendation to the County Commission to approve this rezoning.
Mr. Cybert's made a motion that we approve the rezoning request.
No, I second it.
Excuse me, that he has made a motion that we recommend to the County Commission to approve this request.
No, I second it.
Mr. Mullick has seconded that motion. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our next case, I'm gonna open the public hearing for case number Z twenty-one dash zero 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 five, Kendrick Property. This is a request, request to rezone from RSFE to B three. Does anybody need to declare any prior communication on this item? Okay, Ms. Lee?
Good evening. The subject property is located at three-eight-one-two-zero, State Highway Two-Twenty-Five in Planning District Four. The property is currently zoned RSFE, Single Family Estate District. The requested zoning designation is B three, General Business District. According to the applicant, the purpose of this request is to allow for the property to be developed for general business. The adjoining properties are residential and commercial. On your screen is the locator map showing the subject property and the adjoining properties in the area, as well as the 2018 site photography. There is one correction, the property to the east is not used residential, it is vacant. These are pictures of the subject property and the adjoining properties in the area, and as you can see to the north, there is a new business there, I believe it's Dollar General, and across the street to the north, there is an existing service station and feed store. This is property across the street. Staff believes that the requested change is compatible with the existing development pattern and zoning of nearby properties due to the adjacent B three zoning designations and commercial uses. The master plan provides a future land use designation of residential for the subject property. Approval of the rezoning will result in an amendment of the future land use map to commercial. Commercial uses should be located on major streets so as to be accessible to the residential population. Planning District Four zoning map was adopted in February of nineteen ninety-five. There does not appear to have been any rezonings in this area since two thousand and seven. Staff is unaware of any planned public improvements. Staff received the following comments from the Highway Department after your agenda package was sent out. Property access will need to be coordinated with the state for connection to Highway Two-Twenty-Five or a commercial connection permit through the County Highway Department on White House Fork Road Extension. Any clearing and regrading of the property will need to follow the county stormwater runoff design guidelines. Staff has received one email and several phone calls in opposition to this request, and I believe the chairman was handed a petition at the beginning of this meeting. Unless information to the contrary is revealed at this hearing, staff does feel this rezoning application should be recommended for approval, and I will answer any questions you have for staff.
Any members have any questions for Ms. Lee?
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification. Did you say that this is not residential property behind the subject property?
I said the property to the east is vacant, it's not used residential.
East, east of that.
Yes, that was a mistake.
And that's, the email that we received maintains that it is a buts residential property?
Well, I checked the tax records after our meeting earlier, and the tax records show that the parcel to the east, and I make sure we're talking about the same parcel.
Okay, thank you.
This parcel according to tax records is vacant, so unless something's changed.
It is zoned residential.
It's zoned residential, but according to tax records, it's vacant.
Okay.
Well, this, this, again, just, I'm just trying to understand exactly what's there. What says Magnolia Church is a residential street?
Okay, this is south, that's what I call east. There is a house here. This is Magnolia Church Road coming this way.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
You're welcome.
I was gonna ask you one question, if you knew only just because we start getting into the traffic questions to address before, but has the golf course come out of bankruptcy and being built up with the homes and residents? Do you know that's just to the north of that?
Not that I'm aware of, I don't know.
All right. Just so that the Planning Commissioners know, I was handed a stack of, a petition here of stacked names, probably, I don't know, seventy-five to a hundred names on it, so look at those. All right, this time I'm gonna, we have Mr. Kendrick signed up to speak, and then there's three or four I have signed up in opposition. I'll have Mr. Kendrick come up.
Good afternoon, Brian Kendrick, four-two-one-nine-three, Bayou Road, Baymanet. This property was a foreclosure property, and I invested in it and bought it, and wanted to redevelop it and develop, convert, convert it to a commercial. And we know immediate intention or idea of what to use it for, but in the future, I would definitely want to use it for the best use of the property, and being that it's on a major corridor with Two-Twenty-Five and then the White House Road Extension, and you have commercial on both sides of me, two, two, two sides, and then, and the back, the back two lots are vacant, and therefore I'm asking to have it rezone commercial.
Any questions for the applicant? Hang on.
There again, I have no immediate plans for the property. In the future, I would definitely want to research and, and have it used for the best use for that location, whatever it may be. I mean, it would all fall under the B three category.
Yeah, let me, let me just speak to that for the public, just so that you know, we, the Planning Commission, aren't looking at any specific item. We have a list of items that are allowed in B three, so technically, we're looking at this site, whether it's appropriate for all of the items that are on B three. It doesn't make any difference what he puts there. If it gets zoned B three and he goes away next month or next year, then whatever's on that list can be built there. So we understand that, and we look at the, at all those items. We're looking at whether B three is appropriate for this particular site, not a particular use, other than what's on that list. Okay, any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir. All right, I'm gonna call these three that have signed up in opposition, Beth Suddath.
My name is Beth Suddath, and I live on three-eight-one-two-five, State Highway Two-Twenty-Five. My property is up there where it has the B three, and it's zoned commercial, but that was news to me when I got this map in the mail. I didn't know it was commercial. I bought the property in nineteen ninety-three and put a house on there, and I bought it because it's got beautiful, probably fifteen beautiful hundred-year-old oaks on it. So I didn't know, and I've been talking with the revenue, with the zoning people, and they're looking into how it became commercial. I think there were some zoning changes about that time, nineteen ninety-three, ninety-five, and they voted to zone, but I have a house there, I own the six acres, and I'm directly across from the land that we're talking about being rezoned. So as you see, it impacts me directly, whatever goes there. I sit on my front porch and drink coffee, and whatever there is what I'm gonna look at. Right now, it's big oak trees and foliage, and it's very beautiful. We live in a very beautiful part of the county. And my other concern is the traffic. As you know, our county is growing, and traffic is growing everywhere. And since I've lived on my land and in my house, I've probably seen twenty wrecks right in front of my house, because where Forty runs into Two-Twenty-Five, it's just a bad spot. It's a little hill there, and I've actually been hit there myself, traveling north on Two-Twenty-Five from Forty, so that's a concern of mine, too. And I look at that land, and if it's accessed from Two-Twenty-Five, that's gonna be right in front of my house where my driveway enters the highway. So my concern is just, we have a very pastoral, bucolic area of the county, and we just want to keep it that way. It's very beautiful, and once something is zoned commercial, I don't know how much control we have over what can go there. You just said there are certain things that can go and can't go there, but we just want it to stay beautiful like it is.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
My name is Ann Cook. I live at three-eight-o-eight-o Magnolia Church Road. I'm right beside the property that is being talked about. Residential is Magnolia Church Road, and all the way behind this property. We moved there forty years ago, and it was quiet and nice and beautiful. I know Baldwin County is growing, but in some places, it doesn't need to grow like this. We have beautiful property up there. We also have beautiful water. We have creeks, and there is, Alabama has a natural water resource, and it drains to the white, the property drains to the White House Creek, and we are just concerned that as precious as water is, that we really need to address this. Because we are limited with nat, with natural water. Maybe a DM needs to come in and check out the watershed. It's a bad intersection, it's terrible. It is a hurricane evacuation route that everyone goes down to get where they're going to leave Baldwin County when the hurricanes come. And also, I was going to address something that I hate to bring up, but when the house, when the property was bought, there was a house on that property, and that house was torn down, and it had black mold, and we know it had black mold because we looked at it. And this house was buried on that property. So I don't think that's quite right. And I saw them bury the house. And I guess that's, oh, and the outdoorsman has been open since nineteen sixty-six, so it's been there a very long time before we had all the zoning boards. And I think that is it.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. I'm not sure about the first name, but I can read the last name, Thomas. No one by Thomas wants to speak? All right. Did I miss anyone that wanted to speak that didn't sign up? All right, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing then. All right, Planning Commission, you have any questions for Ms. Lee, or any comments, Ms. Lee?
I, I do have an additional comment. I'd like to address one concern. The property, the subject property, if it is developed commercially, will be required to have a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer along the property lines that are adjacent to the residentially zoned or developed property. So that landscape buffer will help, you know, people having to see whatever's on that site because it was twenty-five feet. There are requirements of canopy trees, understory tree, story trees, shrubs. Also, along State Highway Two-Twenty-Five and White House Fork Roads, there's a ten-foot landscape buffer that's required. It's more aesthetics, but it's trees and shrubs and ground cover. So they would be required to do landscaping, that would-
Okay.
Keep the site aesthetically pleasing.
Any questions for Ms. Lee?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
If a B three designation is approved, is there any subsequent approval required?
Very possibly. If they develop-
Anything under B three can be built there?
Well, what I'm about to say is, we now have the commission's site plan approval. So any structure that's five thousand square feet or larger would have to come back, even if it's permitted by right, to this planning commission. Any structure that's within two hundred feet of residential would have to come back to this planning commission, so it's highly likely that when they get ready to develop the property, they will have to come get approval from you all. You all will be approving more the compatibility to the area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, staff has made a recommendation of approval. The, again, I'll remind the Planning Commission, if you choose to go that route, this will be a recommendation to the County Commission. What would you like to do?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, recommend approval of this rezoning from RSFE to B three.
And Mr. Mullick has made a motion to recommend to the County Commission to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bullier has seconded the motion. All right, any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
One, one opposition. All right, the motion's approved. And understand, this is going to the County Commission, then they make the final decision on, on the rezoning. All right, last case, I'm going to open the public hearing for case number Z twenty-one dash zero 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 six, Ellis Property. This is a rezoning request from RA to RSF four, RSF dash four. Does anybody need to declare any prior communications on this item? Okay, Ms. Boykin?
All right, this is a request to rezone forty acres that is located in Planning District Twenty-One. It is located on the south side of County Road Sixteen, east of Magnolia Springs Highway. The subject property is currently zoned RA, which is rural agriculture, and the applicant is asking that it be rezoned to RSF four, which is a single-family district. The purpose of this request is so they can build a single-family subdivision, as a residential subdivision. As you can see on the locator map, the surrounding properties are zoned RA. Most of the area is agricultural, and it is farmed. Here's a picture of the subject property and some of the adjacent properties. As you can see, everything's pretty rural. This is a proposed site plan. This is just something that the applicant submitted, that in case there is questions, this is kind of what they are proposing, but it has not been through our subdivisions yet. These are some maps that the applicant submitted, and they might want to go through those when they come up to speak. Here's a zoning map. As you can see, there, there are two nearby subdivisions. Both of these existed before there was zoning. There's Henderson Fields to the south. The smallest lot is about fifteen thousand square feet, the largest being a little over an acre. To the north, there's Marham Subdivision. Its average lot size is about seventy-eight-hundred. As you can see on the other map, further north is the intersection of County Road Twelve South and Magnolia Springs Highway. There's more commercial and higher density, and that's kind of where you would expect this development. Therefore, staff, since this is a rural area, staff has recommended denial- Therefore staff, since this is a rural area, staff has recommended denial of the rezoning to RSF4.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Boykin.
Thank you.
All right, I have a couple signed up in favor and one in opposition. Let me start off with those in favor. James Ellis?
How you guys doing? I'm here to represent our developer. His actually, his name's actually not on here, but it's Dr. Gorab. I'm not the property owner, but anyways, we know that at this particular piece of property that this is zoned, it hasn't, I think it was 2009, I want to say this area was zoned. There's unzoned property, property directly to the east of it. I know in this case, none of this matters, but the reality of it is, is with unzoned property being to the east, freshly zoned stuff being to the west, and to the best of my knowledge, the county trying to push forward an agenda that will ultimately zone the entire area. There are several things here that go into play, several ways that we intend to benefit the community here. And two, also have an availability to set a precedence as far as the area is concerned. We all know that there is development moving westward. County Road 65, which is now annexed to Foley, you got Hidden Lakes to the east, it's all headed westward. Baldwin County overall is agricultural and will all be developed at some point. We know that. The thing of it is here is with us having unzoned property to the east, meaning that planning and zoning has no jurisdiction over it whatsoever. Somebody could pop up at any time and they could do anything industrial, they could put up concrete plants, they can do all kinds of stuff. With you guys having the agenda and availability to eventually zone this entire area by way of rezoning this to some type of residential, in our case RSF4, you're setting further precedents beyond further of the few developments that are around this property. So I would just like to plead with you guys to please keep that in mind as you're making your decision here. The other things here that we take into account is how this is going to benefit the community. This development and where it would potentially be currently along County Road 16, coming to the development, there is no water and sewer. The people that live there, they have no access whatsoever. If we go and we move forward with this development, we're bringing water and sewer all the way down County Road 16. All the residents that are along there, they now all have access to water and sewer for their home. Without that and without anyone coming in to do any development, why would they ever bring water and sewer down there? The, you know, agenda of Baldwin County Sewer, who would be our service providers and Riviera Utilities, they're not going to go put a trunk line in to service La La Land. If we come in and we do our thing, now all the nearby residents have availability to do that and they're doing it on our dollar. The other thing here, aside from the obvious things of tax revenue, I mean, on a yearly basis, we do this thing, we're talking a hundred grand a year easily in tax revenue for the county. With County Road 16 growing, the intersection of 16 and 65 moving forward, Hidden Lakes going in, that is going to be changed within time. There will be a major intersection ordeal there and that will have to be improved. This tax revenue directly funds that. It improves that area without, without this development. Of course, you guys are going to be reaching into your pockets. With the development, maybe a little less. The final thing is, is I know that there was someone here that was going to oppose it. We try our best when we're choosing properties and looking at properties to develop, again, how we're going to benefit the community. There's not, there's one thing that's on file and I'll be glad to give you guys a copy of it. It was actually executed earlier today. It's been talk that we've had between our investor, our developer, Dr. Gorab and I. So we did a sworn affidavit that he signed. I want to hand it up to you guys and let you guys review it. What this affidavit states is that in, in the availability of doing this development, we do get a rezone and we can move forward with it. What we are intending to do is, and again, the plat that they had thrown up was something that we had did preliminary, we sort of slowed up when we went to the planning and zoning meeting and for lack of better words, caught friction and realized that they, this may be more of a task and I was going to be left with the option to try to plead this with you guys. What our intended thing to do is within this development is to have a community center. That would include a workout area, swimming pool, clubhouse, a game room, a place that the entire community can come to, to be able to meet, have fun, goof off, a place to join. There's nothing like that in the area. This affidavit states that in the available, in the potential that we can build this development, all landowners that are in the county, that are in the area, within a certain radius, a one mile radius of the property, will have access to those, each and every one. So we're trying to set this up and give some give to take a little bit. We're hoping that you guys will hear our case and, and work with us on this thing. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions? Okay. Not at this time.
Thank you guys.
Mr. Burkle?
I'm Roddy Burkle, 8343 Bayview Drive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners for hearing me. Here in support of the owner and with Mr. Ellis, what he had alluded to earlier, that this development, I think is a need in our community. As you all know, Baldwin County is growing. You're not going to stop it. It's going to grow. Within the county, City of Foley, current census says there's 21,500 people. City of Foley Mayor and Council today told me that's more realistic to say that there's 24,350 people. That's a huge number. I also would like to present to you that today, as of 2:50 PM, south of Highway 98, there were 15 homes, 15, not manufactured, not trailers, homes, available under $250,000 for purchases today. That's not a lot of homes. And with the inflation that we're seeing today, and you all know the price of homes has increased drastically, people need to be able to afford affordable homes. I think this development offers that opportunity for a lot of people. If you'd like to have these lists, I'd be glad to provide them to you. The other point I wanted to make was that in surrounding communities within Foley, as I mentioned, the price of homes has gone up $300,000, $400,000 for homes. If you went back just three years ago, there's subdivisions that I represented clients with homes that were selling three bedroom, two bath, two car garage for $150,000, very affordable. That same home today sells between $250,000 and $300,000. That's a huge increase in price. We have a community, at least in the city of Foley, a community that supports our tourist industry, our manufacturing, a lot of blue collar workers. Those people need homes too. I think this subdivision offers that opportunity for an affordable subdivision for them to live in, not to mention the amenities he mentioned for the surrounding citizens as well. The opportunity for those on County Road 16 to have power and water and sewer provided down the street as well. That said, I noticed in the staff report, item number two, you mentioned there have been few rezonings in the area since it was implemented and that a couple were near County Road 12 and Magnolia Highway, Magnolia Springs Highway. I'm not sure, but I assume that those are the ones that we just mentioned a few minutes ago. There's also a subdivision, I didn't see on the map, to the east of this proposed project. And that subdivision is a similar project to what we're proposing here, what they're proposing here. And then item number six in your report, you mentioned that the RSF4 zoning designation allows for higher density residential use, which would be somewhat inconsistent with the development patterns in the area. I would like to propose to you that I would infer from that that maybe it's somewhat consistent as well. So my whole point is I believe this is a needed subdivision. The current property owner believes in it. I would recommend to you to please reconsider your recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burkle. Any questions for Mr. Burkle?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question and this, I should have asked the other gentleman also. What school district would this development be in?
Foley.
It would be Foley?
Yes, sir.
Has there been any discussion with the, with the school board regarding, you know, impact on, I'm assuming since this is where it's at, these, these kids would be zoned for probably Mathis Elementary?
Yeah, I apologize, I'm not aware of anything, discussions with the school board.
Okay, because, you know, if, if this were approved, you know, at 120 homes, you know, some quick math says that, you know, class sizes at a brand new elementary school south of Highway 59 just got, basically was rendered obsolete, you know? And Magnolia, which is, you know, not far, you know, to the west of the subject property, is already busting at the seams. So there's a, there is legitimate, you know, concern there to have this, you know, denied simply, you know, for effect on the existing school systems, you know, as opposed to, you know, intensification of the use of the property.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if I could, just very briefly, Mr. King heads up our subdivision process as the deputy director, planning director. And Mr. King, if you could just chime in real quickly and talk about, this is just the zoning step on the subdivision side of things, what dialogue do we have with the school system, if any?
So Chairman Commissioners, Buford King. Mr. Chairman, I haven't had a chance to address the commission tonight. I'm sure you all are, all are glad about that.
We noticed.
Yes, sir. What we have been doing typically, what we've been doing on, since I've been back with the county, is that when we, sometimes it's generated by a citizen interest or if it comes up, when we're looking at a, when we're looking at a new, a new development on the subdivision side, we'll voluntarily reach out to the school board. And Mr. Bill Harbor with the school board, he's our point of contact. Now, he's a staff member, not a board member, and we'll, you know, we'll send him a preliminary plat and solicit any comments that they may have from the school board when we have that sort of thing. So what you have here, you know, RSF4 is the highest density available in the zoning code without going for a PRD. So, you know, if this was successful and it did come before, it would come through my side of the building for subdivision purposes. Hearing the discussion tonight, I'd certainly contact this, you know, that's one of the first things I'll do is contact the school board, solicit their comments if it does come before us.
Just a quick rebuttal, if, was that not addressed with the planning commission earlier, the school system questions, I mean? Before considering denial, I mean? Okay.
Not to my knowledge.
I think what Mr. Sibert's concerned about, and I can appreciate what you're saying, but if we and the county commission move forward with rezoning it, then we've already established, it's obvious you're going to come back and do a development that fits the R4, you wouldn't otherwise have asked for it. So then it's kind of too late. We've already rezoned it and so I think it's a valid point to consider at this point whether or not it's, it's good at this density level.
I mean, the toothpaste is out of the tube at that point, once it's, you know, once the zoning goes in place, you know?
Sure. And I'm not necessarily, I, I think we all, and Mr. Nance could even say this, I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, he's, first thing he said when he came up here tonight, he said, "I wish we could get some affordable houses." I don't think there's anybody that denies we don't need that in the county. I think the question that's put on us is is this the right location for it? And so, I'm not saying that I'm not speaking for the group, I don't know, but I, I think that's going to be the issue. It's not the matter of whether we need it or not, we recognize there is.
Sure. And I appreciate your consideration. I've been in your shoes before. I've worked with the City of Foley and their planning commission for eight years, so understand your position. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right, I have one, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to interject just very briefly, if the chairman allow me. The, in the interim period between this meeting and the time that it makes its way to the, to the county commission of consideration, what we can do at staff levels, reach out to the school board, advise them that, that a, a rezoning request is on its way to the county commission. They would have the opportunity to address the county commission at that meeting if they thought it was appropriate.
Okay. Thanks, sir. All right, I do have one signed up in opposition, Mr. Cleverden?
Good afternoon, I'm Tommy Cleverden. I reside at 14939 Georgia Ants Road, Foley. My family's farmed the land around this piece of property, across the road to the north and directly to the east. And this 40 acres that they want to put 120, 140 houses on, it's already a low area. When it rains two inches in an hour or 30 minutes in Baldwin County, we get a lot of runoff. We're dealing with a runoff across our property as it is and, you know, all these houses, rooftops, driveways and asphalt, we're going to have, you know, erosion problems tenfold with the runoff and as far as water pollution that comes out of neighborhoods and stuff like that, I think that's going to impact that area as well. We're concerned about this many houses, the impact on our, impacting our ability to farm it and make a living. Mr. Ellis says, you know, we can't stop it, it's all going to be developed. My property won't be developed, I can, not as long as I'm alive. So it's a, I think y'all have all seen a peanut harvester in Baldwin County and when the wind blows the wrong way and they make a lot of dust and dirt and, and, you know, we could cover these neighborhoods and we try to be considered neighbors, but you know, that's part of our, our lifestyle, our farming, stuff like that happens. Sometimes the wind blows and mother nature, you can't, you can't control that and it can, you know, create trouble. We have some neighbors, you know, that fuss at us already and we spread organic fertilizer, known as chicken manure. And, and it's, it's good for our ground and it has a little smell to it, but we incorporate it in the ground, but I can imagine 120 people in the neighborhood calling somebody, me and somebody else, they're going, "Hey, why are y'all making this smell? You know, why are y'all stinking up the place down here?" So that's one of our concerns. One of the, I read that, they said that this housing, they, it was not going to impact the traffic in the area. I don't understand how you can have this many houses with twice that many cars not impacting our area. The subdivision, they showed it going out Sherman Road, which is through a residential area to 12, crossing 16 into 12. That's a 25 mile per hour speed limit right there and those, and those houses are right on the road there. So that's a, that's, I think that would definitely be a consideration there. I just, I think y'all have all, if you've driven down County Road 65 lately, you know, with the, with the development there, it's, it's, it's not good. It's not good. And I just, I hope we can, you know, I know the development, we need it, but let these people from out of town come in here and make a lot of money off of a development and they don't live here, you know, I have an issue with that as well, but it's just, it's something that I think we'd like to see the growth controlled in the right places and, you know, this is a rural agricultural area, it just doesn't seem like the right fit for us. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. Any questions for Mr. Cleverden? Thanks, sir. All right, that's all that I had signed up. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Sure. I know there were several things that were brought up regarding, for instance, the school board and Mr. Cleverden's concern about development area. I know that he had mentioned drainage and I just want to reiterate and I'm sure you guys will know, but we're simply trying to get zoning at this point. I can say that a traffic study would indefinitely have to be done in order to aid in, in this development to get subdivision approval. Mr. King said it well when he said that if this is approved, it goes to that point, one of the first things he'll do is contact the school board. Obviously, we would be in contact with them as well because without proper schooling and availability for children to go to school, we don't have much of an outlet to market from. So it behooves us to be able to make that and, and go in that direction. The other thing that I can say with Mr. Cleverden and I just want to let you know this, we have to construct drainage calculations and, and even though that's beyond the zoning for the time being, all of it has to go that way. We, we have to provide adequate drainage and store proper runoff in order to let it leave our property. The reality of it is, is that this, there's actually a low indention across the property and it was actually dug. It's not natural, it was dug. The property has a low indention in the middle, we've accounted for it. The re-
The reality of it is, is we would actually embed her and make a better situation of neighboring nearby drainage because we would give adequate areas to be able to facilitate this versus backing up upstream, which could potentially harm your peanut farm. And not only that, we need a ton of grass and we know you sell a lot of it. So something to think about, too, is, you know, we're not here to hurt anyone, we're here to add. And that's the end of it. So, thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Got any other questions? All right, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing then. Is there any questions of our staff? Selena, do you need to add anything?
I have no additional comments.
Can I just ask one point for my own clarification on the site map? Is that legend that predominates the lots, is that wetlands? Are there wetlands in there? Am I misreading the legend?
It has shown some potential wetlands on our aerial, but that's just potential. They're saying there's a chance. We do not have a wetland delineation that would be looked at during the subdivision process. But yeah, our map is just showing there could be a chance that there are wetlands on that property.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? No, thank you. We've already closed the public hearing. All right, any other questions? Any comments?
The neighborhood just blew, is that RSF2, RSF1? I guess that's to the south.
I believe it's RSF1.
RSF1, okay.
Yes.
RSF1, okay.
Okay, staff has made a recommendation to denial on this. This one also will be a recommendation to the county commission. Which direction you want to go?
I would make a motion that we deny the request from, to rezone this from rural agriculture to RSF4, reasons being it's not appropriate with what's in the surrounding area.
Okay, Mr. Mullick has made a motion that we deny the request. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Seibert made the second to the motion.
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder that this is just a recommendation for denial.
Yep. All right, any questions, comments before we go? All right, the motion is to deny. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Recommendation to county commission will be to deny then. And that is the end of our cases tonight. The one other case, we had an old business, as I mentioned at the beginning, was already addressed with staff. Is there any other business, new business, old business that we need to address? I don't know of any public comments. Staff reports?
Just a couple very quick items. First of all, I do want to give a shout out to law enforcement here tonight, we appreciate their presence. I also want to give a shout out to our CIS team, Chris Welch and Zach Gibbs. These folks are, they are behind the scenes recording this, making sure it happens, they have to stay late. So if we have a late meeting, they're stuck here and that law enforcement as well, so we appreciate those folks who are kind of helping us on the side with this. One final thing, I want to talk to the planning commission about holding a special meeting, and I realize December may not be the best time for this, so possibly early January, shortly after our regularly scheduled meeting, to discuss some conditional uses, they're now called commissioned site plan approvals, but these were approved as conditional uses that we get a number of complaints on and to bring them back in front of the planning commission to see if they are operating beyond the scope of what was approved and if they've become, or if they've become nuisances. And the zoning ordinance allows you to do that. These are event venues and they continue to be problematic sites for us. Kind of wanted to just see if the planning commission had any thoughts on if you would be willing to do a special meeting to just handle two cases specifically that we would bring in front of you. They're probably going to be controversial, there's probably going to be a decent amount of public that comes to them and I thought it might be best to kind of segregate them from our normal meeting for the purpose of there not being confusion about what type of action we're looking at in these cases versus what we normally hear at our meetings. Any particular thoughts on that? That'd be an extra night for you and we have talked to legal counsel, she, Erin may have, Ms. Welch may have something to add to that as well.
Well, I was just going to say, under the bylaws and under the law, you can call a special meeting and it's still open to the public, it's still published and there's still notification that it's going on and what is going to be discussed at it, it's just trying to get it out of a already two- or three-hour meeting, you know, to somewhere where it may just be for the people interested in those particular conditional use, potential violations or whatever it is.
So are you saying you want to follow a regular scheduled meeting or are you trying to have a separate date to have?
I'm talking about having a separate date, just in case they're lengthy. And if y'all are like, hey, listen, just stick them in to the regular meeting and we'll have a lengthy meeting, we're okay with that as well. That's just kind of what we were thinking because these are pretty unique type cases for us to hear. So we were thinking that might help us to not get them mixed up with our normal cases that we would hear at a meeting. But we're okay either way, we don't necessarily have a preference, that was just kind of a thought.
How does next month's agenda look, you know?
We do have a number of cases on there, including a couple PRDs that came in the door, which, and those all tend to be kind of controversial. You just never know in terms of whether or not the applications were sufficient to make it onto the agenda itself. We don't know that usually until like three weeks prior or so. There were supposed to be many more on this agenda, but folks just failed to get comments taken care of in time and therefore they were bumped to the next meeting.
I just have a question. We've done this twice and I hope the same one's not coming back again, that we have made comments on multiple times. Some say yeses and nos.
Well, one of these is probably one of them.
Right, well, just for our benefit and the guys that haven't been on the commission, and we're listening to a neighbor complain, we're listening to a business owner say she's not, and we're literally listening to one person's word over another, which quite frankly is inefficient, and so if we're going to review it, if staff is, I mean, have we heard? Have we listened? Do we have any real evidence? Or are we upset with a special use condition that was in place and someone will keep bringing it back every year and tell you that it's not working? And it puts us in a very awkward position where it's a neighbor versus another we impose. So I don't know how that works.
So let me say this, if we bring these cases to you, we're going to come with very distinct recommendations that we believe represent what was the intention of the originally improved conditional use and what our recommendations would be for how, what needs to change to accomplish what was originally approved. And we won't bring them in front of you if we don't feel like that conditional use is being violated as it was approved by this planning commission.
I'm looking at you guys, it obviously work. As a retired person, I'll be here.
Matthew, if that's something you feel that we need to do, I mean, I personally, I mean, you tell me to be here and I'll be here.
Do we want to pick a date at this point or you want to get back and let us know?
Let's, we can discuss that off the record, it's not, that's something that can be, doesn't have to be decided at a public meeting. So I just, if there's no one overtly opposed to that separate meeting, then we'll circulate on some dates. That's a meeting.
Just don't keep getting earlier and earlier and earlier. At some point, I've got to ask you, do you want me just to leave? Because if you get earlier, it's the...
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, legal counsel.
I really don't have anything, but it was very interesting what you showed us earlier, Matthew, about what the website can now do and all that information that's now at every citizen's fingertips, you know? So I mean, I think that's amazing and I hope word gets out that that's there because I know that should help you guys a lot when you get all these questions that you can point to actual permits and actual applications and everybody can see what you guys see from that end and it's just such great transparency. So I just, I think that that was an amazing demonstration that you showed that the website can do now. So I just think that's great and I would just tell every citizen if they're curious to go to the Baldwin County Planning and Zoning Department website and see what kind of access that we as citizens now have on that website. So I just think you guys did a wonderful, and girls did a wonderful job of that. It looks like it's going to be a great resource for you and for all the citizens here. So I really thank y'all because that must have been a huge undertaking. So great work on that and I just hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Okay, well, we had a good turnout tonight. Appreciate all you guys showing up and being at the meeting. Thank you, staff, for what you've done and for those of you guys that have to stay late, wait till we all get out of here, but we're appreciative of all of that, recognize that y'all put a lot of work into this, too. So thank you so much. I likewise would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We meet again on January the 6th and as been doing lately, I will communicate with you prior to that meeting and prior to our special meeting and just see how that works out. Okay, anything else? We are adjourned.